I gave everybody a couple extra minutes there. Again, we want to keep this moving today and I'd like for us to keep this to about an hour, maybe a little more if we can, or less.
Ten minutes?
No, Commissioner Hillbrand would like ten minutes, that's unrealistic. But we'll call the meeting to order and I'm going to turn it over, I guess, to Mark to begin the discussion on space planning. Good morning.
Good morning. All right, can everybody hear me okay? Excellent. All right, so today we can, I want to set the tone for what the discussion is and hopefully diffuse any anxiety that's out there today on deciding a building. So what we are seeking today is consensus around the path moving forward. So if you think back to February, we took a tour of the Old Kent Hospital and we had a work session jointly with the building authority. And at that time, we were on a path for a new construction approach and we said, you know, we have this opportunity with the hospital, let's pause and test out this idea. So we left that work session and continued to work with the building authority and the executive committee to vet that out. And what I want to say now is that it was staff recommendation that we proceed with a new construction facility and not a reconstruction of the hospital. And we took that recommendation to the executive committee in June. And we'll go through the details today, but I didn't want to have a big buildup and you wait to the end, so it was our recommendation at that time that we proceed with a new construction versus a reuse of the Old Kent Hospital. And globally, the value of constructing a new facility was much greater to the county once you start looking at the 10, 20, 50-year window. So at that time, that was not a formal vote, that was consensus seeking from the executive committee. And they said, "We like this path, but we want you to continue on, get some more detail, reengage with the departments, make sure that this will work." And that brings us to today. So we are, and I want to do some definitions, we are in the schematic design phase and we're about a third of the way through that phase. And what that means is that schematic design is when you create the shell, you lay out the floor plans, you pick utilities, and we're about a third of the way through that process and we're ultimately building to April. So keep April in your mind, that is really the end of schematic design and when the board would decide, yes, this is what we want and we're going to, we want to move forward with potentially issuing bonds and proceeding. So that is coming. Where we are today is we have a rough shell, we have floor adjacencies, we have what we think the building will look like, but keep in mind, we haven't added in utilities and wires and cables and pipes and that type of thing. So as we start to add those in, we may see a wall shift slightly, we may see a desk have to get moved, we may see an office moved. So that's where we are contextually in this process. So today, at the end, we really want to take any questions that remain and we want to see if we have consensus around this table to continue to work with the building authority towards that April date of having a completed schematic design. At that point, schematic design turns into design development and that's where we turn these pretty pictures into actual construction drawings that we would bid out to build this facility. In advance of April, what we're also hopeful to do, so if we have consensus today, there are checkboxes between now and April that we need to fulfill. And a big one of those is public engagement. We need to get out to the community, show them some renderings, talk to the neighborhoods around the facility and see, seek input, seek buy-in, let them know they're doing because we really want to build awareness in the surrounding communities before they see this building coming down and they have no idea what's happening over there. So we want to be very proactive in communicating that to the community. We also need to work towards a planning commission approval at the City of Grand Rapids. And once we initiate that process, which we've already been having conversations with their planning department to make sure that whatever we're building aligns with the ordinance and our agreement with the city. And once we officially start that process, when we have a better design, that will trigger informational notices going to the neighbors and we want to make sure that we're ahead of that so that they're aware of what's taking place. We also, as a part of the schematic design, need to bring on our contractors. So a part of the IPD process is that we have an HVAC professional, we have a concrete professional, we have a mechanical professional onsite as we're designing this so that there's not finger pointing later. So today is about consensus, do we like where we're going? If yes, then we will start to do the public engagement, we will continue engaged with the City of Grand Rapids and we will bring on the contractors for this project to help with the initial design through the schematic design phase. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our progressive team to talk through some of the items. And I did not, I figured me explaining this timeline was much simpler than reading this timeline. We did make copies, but the transition here is that we've been on this windy road and we keep putting this graphic in front of you and I know it can be frustrating at times, but this is really where the magic happens. So we have gone through ideas and testing and we've come out with a better product in my opinion than we would if we had a very linear, quick path to building this building. So now you will see that this road is starting to straighten out and we'll have a more linear approach and quicker response to getting this put together. So before we start with the informational presentation, are there any questions on today, expectations or anything?
I'll call on Commissioner Faber in a second, but I just want to say that we, there is, I would say, relative consensus about the general direction around the table in the executive committee, but we wanted to bring this conversation to the full board and staff thought that was a good idea as well to get some feedback from this group before we move forward and make sure we're kind of aligned. So Commissioner Faber.
Yeah, just real quick while the timeline's up, so the City of Grand Rapids Planning Commission approval, is that required or are we going because we're a nice neighbor and that's what we want to do?
We are vetting that out right now.
Okay, thank you for that.
The City of Grand Rapids is formulating a legal opinion, so I think it may be a voluntary path. It sounded like a one, we would need to go to one meeting to explain what we're doing and that, but I think from, if I was to read between the lines from the city, they really want us to get out and explain to the public what's happening. So there's awareness, people know what's going on and we're a good neighbor.
Okay, thank you. And just real quick on that, good segue, so the demolition piece which we'll talk about, is there a separate community engagement process prior to demo? Just flagging that that probably should happen somewhere in here.
In my mind, I think that we need to have a little better renderings and then we'll have an open house maybe over at the MSU Extension Facility, right there, and invite all of the four, there's four neighborhood associations that kind of converge in that area. So we invite those four, we seek input, we build awareness, and that would happen before the demo because the demo of that facility will definitely be noticed, so we want to make sure that we're building awareness and being a good neighbor.
Okay, I don't see anybody else. Okay, please, we'll do that and with more time for questions and comments after.
Chad Gould with Progressive Companies, architect. Last time we spoke, we were really talking about the potential for utilizing a hospital for the potential administration facility. So for our time today, I'm going to try and go through this pretty quickly. I think you guys have spent some time with the packet and I find the less I talk and the more we engage is probably the best outcome. So we'll review guiding principles, we'll talk a little bit about the hospital and a new build, what the differences are, what the meaningful differences might be, show you a little bit about how departments are starting to organize within new building, at least conceptually, talk a little bit about our thoughts for organization of interior space, and then have some discussion, so. Just to keep in mind on, as we review all of this material, goals for the project, excellent resident and staff experience, really being good stewards of resources and that means really thinking about lasting value and making smart decisions. You know, buildings, building construction, we're responsible for 40% of greenhouse gases out there. So it's important that we make really great decisions and have a really, a building that serves us long into the future, that can be adapted and give us really lasting value. So that's sort of our last principle there. High altitude snapshot between reconstruction and new construction, they're sort of similar scopes in terms of costs and size. I think really, some of the differences we'll go through in the coming slides, but really if you go down towards the bottom there, they're going to be about the same height, they're going to have about the same square footage. I think that building efficiency factor, column spacing and floor-to-floor height are kind of some technical terms, but really, we'll talk about adaptability and longevity of a building that has a little bit more flexibility and I think that's what the new construction, is one of the things the new construction would offer the county. So we talked about column spacing relative to the hospital and to a new build, you can kind of see in the plan graphics at the bottom. And really what this means is moving forward, every time you needed to renovate or grow a department or expand or shrink in the hospital building, you will be dealing with columns and you'll be dealing with trying to rework infrastructure in a very narrow floor-to-floor height. So this graphic just really represents where we would recommend today for a new building, plenty of floor-to-floor height to move infrastructure around. And that impacts also, you know, programmatic decisions. Things like large training room spaces require taller ceiling heights and so the hospital is pretty restrictive in that. It really only offers that opportunity on that top floor. So this really means spaces like this, large-scale training spaces, these are images of the hospital reconstruction. We would remove the roof at the top and build a new roof that is higher, remove some columns up there so we can get column-free space. So all of our larger training, public engagement spaces would need to be on the top floor. They can be accommodated, but it is, there's no flexibility to distribute those through the, through the building and it also sort of means we're bringing public up to the very top floor. Maybe we could be more direct with our engagement with the public on ground floor. So I think that's one big difference between these two opportunities. Overall, the buildings are going to be similar in height, views from the top will be similar. A new building does offer us some opportunities in terms of site orientation. The sketch on the right is a potential orientation for new building where we're able to turn it to have a little bit better solar orientation and also move it back a little bit. This allows for easing of our road connection at Fuller. I can see in the sketch on the left how that traffic is kind of bends quite aggressively to get into Fuller. So, you know, we think we'll be making a more, a safer, easier to navigate site and potential for the building to have a little bit better solar orientation. We're also envisioning, you know, parking spaces that connect but are smaller so that on big public events, we can use staff parking as overflow for public, but any one parking space doesn't feel overwhelmingly large. Just a little blow-up of that view, we're really interested also in cleaning up some of the site circulation into the Network 180 building with this opportunity so that we create as safe a road alignment as possible, a little bit more room for stacking. And potentially down there in the bottom left of that site sketch on the left, reserving, reserving portions of this campus for potential future needs. So last time, I don't know if it was last time, but I showed a pretty enticing view from the roof towards downtown and everybody told me I was too optimistic with that, so we flew a drone up and we took a picture and I think it's still going to be better than that, but, you know, when you fly a camera, it's different than our eyes. Our eyes are going to see a little bit more, but it's still, the views from the top of the hospital and the top of the new building will be of downtown potentially to the southwest and I think we will see our major landmarks in the distance.
I like the, this is probably a balance between the two that we saw.
Yeah, I think so too. I saw it today.
This is nice, it's still nice, it's good, it's, you know. We'll be more impressed if we see it in person, right, than from this, right?
That's the thing, that this leaves room for impression later, yeah. This is even better than you said. And lower right, the view turning into the campus from Fuller, trying to set up some, like really civic presence and intuitive wayfinding with building massing. Views a little bit more towards the Bradford side, we think the orientation, you know, presents a little bit of its smaller face towards Bradford. We think the residents there will appreciate that. It has a similar entrance experience for the primary staff parking areas to public areas, so, you know, we think that, that really brings that sense of civic pride in what we're doing at this building to everyone and there's no backdoor sort of type of experience. Okay, so we, I talked a little bit about organization of our main public spaces and in a new building, that floor one, we're really envisioning that as a place for the most direct and important public engagement. So that would be boardroom, this space, as well as the functions of, you know, community service that are most important, so clerk, treasurer, equalization, those types of transactional engagements that our neighbors need, all happening really on a ground floor. The light blue spaces here are training spaces, so you can see how those are distributed up through the upper floors, I think, and culminating on the top floor with a signature training space and outdoor terrace. Probably don't get, need to get into the details of which departments are in which yet, we're still sort of vetting that out and working with the departments themselves to best optimize the building, but I think this plan gives us the ability to move training to really any floor that it's needed and that'll help us be, that'll help us be agile as department needs change over time. Okay, these are some cool new images. So these aren't really real. I would just say that these are really idea sketches of the kinds of things that we've been talking about as a design team. Let's start with the image in the upper right. So coming in from public entrance to some sort of welcoming lobby space, it's sort of important that you see where you're going, right? That you have, that's an intuitive invitation to where am I headed? So you can sort of see off to the right, we've got our main customer service engagement areas for residents where we can sit down and have transactions. And we love in this sketch that it has daylight at the end, it feels like it's safe and bright and welcoming, but all of that needs to be worked out with the needs of the departments in terms of floor plan. So take this as just an artist's idea of what could happen. We also think it's kind of interesting to connect to the main training floor, which would be on floor two. So if you're a county employee, you're there for a training, you can just come right in, pop up to two, and most of our training spaces are on that level. Off to the left in that sketch, you can kind of see some doors that would get you into an idea for a board chamber space, so there's some, two sketches on the left. Creating privacy and security for this function, but also the potential for some natural light to come in through upper high glass could be a possibility. So I hope we can, I hope we can have a lot of dialogue with the broader design team in future about how best to serve our residents and make this really welcoming and civic and important place to come, but we think, we think there's a lot of opportunity in that new building. We're really excited to share these drawings with you. So I think that's kind of where I'll stop and then maybe we can have some conversation.
Reactions, questions, comments from Commissioners? Commissioner Morales.
Something that I enjoyed about where we are right now is that we have covered parking, which is especially nice in the winter or when there's inclement weather. I know we're designed for adaptability and we'd have to get every idea or feature in all at once, but would there be a way to make sure that's like a possible option in the future to have some kind of covered parking?
I think one of the things that we've been asked to study is actually, can we develop, there are solar panel covered parking things available and so we're really evaluating that. One, it's going to provide us some shelter, but also move us towards some of our energy goals.
Commissioner Stack.
I did want to chime in.
Yeah, go ahead.
So with each parking scenario comes a cost, so.
Which is not how that works.
Right, so just for the group, so covered ramp parking is very expensive, especially if there's not a built-in revenue source, so we wouldn't be charging the general public, so that would be very expensive to build a ramp parking. But the solar-covered roofs is an option and that is something that we would likely choose for from a grant perspective, but then we'd have to weigh the value proposition if there was no grant funding available to, what's the true cost of that versus our benefit? And sometimes I think I heard somebody say there's no bad weather in Michigan, there's just bad gear, right? So, but that is definitely something.
I don't agree with that statement, but.
Commissioner Stack.
Bad weather and bad gear, but.
Thank you, Jerry Green. So this is the opportunity for all my questions, right? Okay. So first of all, the orientation of the proposed new construction, I assume that that's primarily driven by maximum efficiency in operations, by that orientation?
So the simplicity of the floor plan is developed to be flexible and it's positioning on site is a balance of that and also its solar exposure. So, right, so southwest is probably our worst, so like the hospital's facade is the worst for heat gain, especially when you clad something with something like a brick, which tends to absorb heat during the day and radiate it at night. So this turn is a little bit of a nod towards improving, reducing the energy needs of the building and I think having a more flexible floor plan in terms of shape allows the county flexibility to adapt over time.
So my initial impression would be as you enter the area, the campus from Fuller, you would expect the original orientation to be, you drive towards a big new county building and this twists it 90 degrees to orient a little bit differently and I get that. I think the process of the extended access to the north reorients, I guess, the entrance there. But I'm wondering whether the facade of the primary structure to the parking lot area could be opened up more so it doesn't look like you're coming in the side door, coming more into the front door. And that might be one way of opening it. I know it's a design issue, but that's one thought that I had.
Yeah, we are definitely on the same page of wanting to be as open and welcoming as possible, so.
Right.
We're going to pursue that.
Because I like it, but again, it strikes me a little bit, particularly for people that are used to going to the campus, this looks like you're coming in the side door and not the front door. The parking, I also like the idea of minimizing parking, you absolutely have to have it, I get it. This new construction moves more the overflow, or maybe all the overflow from the front to the back. And it's probably premature, but still breaking up that parking so it's not just, you know, so many acres of pavement and more breakage with green buffers or what have you, would make sense to me.
Absolutely.
I think I raised this the last time, the new orientation of the new construction still, I suspect, will leave most of that face looking at the back door of Network 180. And a back door, we're not even sure what it'll look like because you're tearing off the hospital. I still would like to see renditions of what are we looking at when that's all said and done, because we may not like that very much.
Yep.
So I think that's, to me, would be an important part of, you know, show us what we can do so that we're not looking into somebody's, you know, torn-down garage.
Absolutely. One of the things the team's been doing is cataloging all of the historic elements of the existing hospital building, primarily the 1920's building, that's in the back of the 1950's building. So the goal, I think, for us is to recognize some of that architecture, that potential, some of those stone pieces and collect those all to maybe tell a story about reuse. If we're putting new facades back on, I could see really utilizing some of that, some of those really beautiful historic stone pieces to create a lovely composition there. So there's a lot of opportunity, both to use that stuff on the interior of the new building, but also to tell, to improve that facade that we discussed last time.
So is, and then Veteran Services, I see is now located in, but still have the Veteran Service Building with, they have two sites, what's the thinking?
I think what we've discussed is, yeah.
The current plan is to pull Veteran Services into the first floor of this facility.
And out of the building on the corner.
And out of the corner. What we've been envisioning for the current Veteran Services Building in the future is some type of neighborhood cafe, coffee shop that would support the campus, because now we're moving a larger center of gravity out to that campus. We could put something like that in our facility, but we think the success of that facility would be limited because you'd have a few years of staff using it and then they want something different. And so if it's located in an outlot or a periphery of the site, it's our feeling that our staff and the community can use it and that will set them up for long-term success. What we've also found out in our conversations with the city is that that is something that has been asked for and desired by the neighborhood organizations in that area. So that's what our current mindset is for that building as we work through this process.
Well, that's good because that was the last thing on my list, identifying space for staff. Maybe to get out of the building is a nice idea, but, you know, not having to drive downtown or somewhere else, but, you know, whether it's lunch or it's a break area or it's just a gap space.
Right.
I like the idea. I would encourage that. Maybe the county continue to own it so that we can control the use of that so we know what we're getting long-term in that space.
Yeah, I don't think it would be our intent to let the property go, but we'd have some kind of leased arrangement in that space. And in terms of the outdoor space for staff, that is on our minds. If you look at some of the campus plans, you'll see some green lines and walking paths. So we do, we are working on a walkability plan for the campus to build out more trails to get people out walking. We're also in communication with the Michigan State Extension Office in expanding the Grand Ideas Garden further towards the new building so that we have, you know, built-in outdoor amenities that the public and staff can use for lunch or just taking a five-minute break, whatever. So that is our, if you zoom out a little bit, that is our intent to do that.
Okay. Well, and then just in general to say, I was, earlier I was more of a proponent of rehabbing the existing facility because I think it had some, some strong benefits to it ecologically as well as just being able to establish good effective use of public funds. But the prices are coming in pretty close here. And frankly, the plus or minus on a rehab is maybe a little bit narrow, it seems to me it could be higher than that. And our driving objectives here are efficiency and capacity to be more responsive to the public and the new construction is, to me, is miles ahead in being able to address those key needs as to why we're doing this to begin with. So, thank you.
Commissioner Oliver King.
Thank you, Chair. I'm not quite sure how to ask my question, but our security factor.
I'm not quite sure how to ask my question, but are security factors considered within this plan? For example, I mean, we have the clerk's office, the treasurer's office, a sheriff's office, all on the first floor. If something were to pop off, what do they do?
This is on, this is like top priority on design team's mind. Just for safety, personal safety, safety of our staff and residents, but also in terms of, you know, that big picture goal of excellent customer and staff experience. So there's a lot of conversations being had about, you know, where do you best control that? You know, is there one secure point and then you're past that? And then the interactions you have after that are a little bit more comfortable because everybody's already been through screening versus having that layer of protection at every point throughout the building. So it is, it's fairly early days, but it is top of mind. And I think we'll be coming back with a more definitive story around what we think the best recommendation for security is.
So will your plans show like the staircases, you know, what are the exit signs or things like that?
Yeah, so clearly, safe exiting is, it's driven by building code, honestly, but it also, we want to make sure that everybody that uses the building, it's intuitive how to get out. So that's, that will be their promise on that one. And then in terms of just using vertical circulation, it's important that we're not creating unsafe staircases that are dark and out of the way just for personal safety. So we always tend to lean towards visual and accessible, but that's a balance too. So we're trying to sort through best outcomes and look forward to bringing you some more definition in the future on that. But it is certainly something we'd love to talk more about.
And then my last question, I was looking at this. I was just thinking of ADA compliance. You know, when we talk about having access to the building, how does that work in this plan?
So this, the, I think goal for this building is 100%, you know, universal accessibility. And for us, that means as accessible as possible every space. And so for example, getting to the front door, we like a little bit of a grade change there because it helps prevent vehicles from driving into buildings. But we also want to make sure we're accommodating every resident. Not just in a ramp, but potentially even a flatter situation like a sloped walk that might be a little bit easier to navigate. It will all start and end at the same place, so there's no difference of experience. We are leaders in universal design around the world and Grand Rapids is actually a leadership community when you think of energy and the environment and when you think about accessibility. I think we are leaders here. So this building is going to be 100% accessible.
Commissioner Hildenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. On this slide here, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So building entrance is on floor one, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So is floor zero underground?
So there's a 10-foot grade change as you go around to the east. And so, yeah, floor zero, where loading access is in and other things would be lower level. It would have daylight or windows potentially on the east and a little bit on the south.
Great. Yeah, what I like, because I was a little confused there for a second because all the public, more public-facing departments, you know, it seems to me to make sense that you would want to avoid stairs and elevators if possible. And I see, I think that's what's designed here, so it's good sense. I also wanted to reiterate, just in the executive committee, I was a strong supporter of the new build. And so I just wanted to reiterate that I think the potential and the restrictions and issues with using the existing facility, the build restrictions, the potential liabilities, the age, I think we're open ourselves up to a lot of issues. So I'm a big fan of pursuing this new build concept. So, thank you.
Commissioner DeBoer.
Thank you, Chair. This looks so much better than anything I've seen before. And so thank you for the work put into this. My main questions really are around the other offices for our clerks, for our treasurer. If you wanted to speak to what your thoughts are, if you support this or in some of the... Like I'm also curious of some of our public departments. Can you tell me, like, how did it go with that services? Are they supportive of this, that kind of thing?
The clerk can speak to that if you'd like to, Madam Clerk. And I don't know if the, I think the treasurer's, he's hiding back there.
Well, I don't think it's any secret that I was not supportive of a remodel in the first place for many of the same reasons Commissioner Hildenbrand mentioned. And I think there was a lot of due diligence done here. I will say, there was a lot of time spent on the front end, meeting with the departments and especially Pete and myself and because we're so public-facing. And just a lot of forethought too, as somebody who does the CPLs in the county, we have been planning to do fingerprinting, which we use to send, which we currently send up to the sheriff's office. While taking into consideration safety issues and security and what we have been lacking here for so long, why not bring the sheriff's office with that capability right down onto the first floor in our building? And so to kind of merge those functions to make it easier for our customers, for the public, and to provide just a layer of security that I think brings a good peace of mind to our staff was really, was really kind of like an aha moment. They've done a good job of asking us what we need and trying to make that work. Nothing is going to be perfect, certainly, but I think the customer experience here is going to be, is going to be much improved from what it has, what we have currently. So I think, I think they've hit on all of the highlights, the main things, the main concerns and the main necessities. And at least as far as it goes to my particular area.
Thank you. Would you like to add anything, Treasurer McGregor? You're welcome to.
This is a whole lot better improvement than where we started, so I'd have to agree with the clerk. Addressing all the big picture concerns, there's just a lot going on on the first floor that is my biggest concern. So, and but those are details that we can still work out as we move forward, but the concept, I think, is sound.
Thank you. Is that helpful, Commissioner DeBoer? Do you have others?
That's helpful. I was just wondering if you can share any more about the, maybe vet services or the other, maybe even equalization. And I would also echo, I really would probably prefer this new construction like this than refitting the hospital.
I can address the equalization part on the first floor. When people are coming in to record deeds and when we're dealing with those land transactions, those land records, right now we have to send them, they have to visit our office, the treasurer's office and equalization. And so they come to our office first, then they have to go to equalization, which currently we send them to the third floor. And then they have to go back down to treasurer's office. So it's like stand-up, sit-down, record, record, record. So we're looking to kind of make that seamless for the customers. I really don't know the rationale behind Veteran Services being on the first floor, but I can, I just wanted to speak to equalization.
Thank you. I don't think anybody's here from Veteran Services, so I'll speak for our interactions with them. As you know, they're on the corner right now of that campus. That building is adequate, but not ideal for their needs right now. The way that they meet with veterans and the services that they provide veterans are very sensitive. Services in the meeting rooms don't have a ceiling. And so acoustics are a challenge to keep privacy and dignity for those veterans that are coming in for services. It's a tricky balance for them currently. And so they're very happy to be in the new facility. It's less about interaction with other departments. I don't know that there's necessarily a whole lot of times that a veteran coming in for services would also need to stop at the clerk's office at the same time. But if you can appreciate a lot of the veterans that do need services from that department, they might have mobility challenges, they might have difficulty navigating kind of a big, complex facility. So our goal is to keep them on the first floor just from that universal design standpoint that as they come in the front of the building, it's easy to navigate, there's visible connection to where they're headed and they don't have to try to navigate also tight spaces. Elevators aren't always friendly if somebody's suffering with PTSD. So a little bit of the rationale of why they were coming in here and why we worked really hard to keep them on the first floor and they seem happy with that from my impression. I don't think you've received any different feedback, so hope that helps.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm on the advisory committee for vet services. I just wanted to know that they were engaged and that they are supportive of it. So, thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner Hildenbrand.
Thank you, Chair. I wonder if we could go back to page five, the total project budget. I'm just wondering, what are the costs outside of building cost and site costs that we're looking at and the differences between the two scenarios? Because the new build seems like it comes out higher, although the costs look lower. So what's the difference there?
It's a great question. I had the exact same question. So.
I can address probably most of that question. So there's kind of three main components when we look at overall project cost. So when we're looking at doing an analysis, a benchmarking study of this type of building, the size of building, the components of the building, there is kind of the initial phase, which is what we call the bricks and sticks, right? So the trade contractor cost, which makes up what is primarily going to be the trade contracts for everything from site work to steel to building envelope and finishes. And then the other project costs are some of the contingencies which are addressed there as well. But there is the architectural design is a component of this as well. And then there's the owner side of this. So we've been working with the facilities team to look at things that are not typically within the construction scope. So there might be some of the technology, it might be furniture, it might be artwork, some of those other considerations. So there's typically an overall construction budget and then there's a project budget and it's a blend of those two. So we have kind of the above-the-line from our standpoint as the construction manager and then there's the client cost. So sometimes that could be, depending on what the program of the building is, you could see that's, you know, 20 to 30% in what we call owner costs. So that's other fees for permitting, plan review, inspections, those type of costs. So those are all rolled into that overall project cost.
Okay, thank you. I guess I would also like to add that I really like the new version much better than the original new build proposal that we were shown. And while I really like the idea of reusing the old hospital ecologically and for those kinds of reasons, I really did, I was concerned about the low ceilings and the lack of ability to reconfigure space side to side on each floor. And it seems not a great idea to force ourselves from the outset at being, not having options going forward. So anyway, thanks very much for the presentation.
You bet. I think we're still going to have a very great sustainability story. It's just going to come from a different section of the library than adaptive reuse. So something like a parking lot can be over a geothermal field that can have solar cover. So where we have something that we have to have that's kind of a negative environmentally, we can try to be resilient about that and turn it into a positive. I think that's the attitude or the mindset of the design team. We'll be continuing to look for those opportunities to make a great story on sustainability for the county.
Thank you. We've got one, two, three, four commissioners in line. We'll get to you. Mark, I wanted to ask, how much do we have left to go through to present to us? I just want to be mindful of the time.
I think there's only a few more slides.
Okay. And if we want to do those now, that's fine, or we can continue on. But I think that we could, if you want to finish it up and then we can do questions relative to everything. And again, commissioners who have been in line, I've got you.
Just to have a head, oh, yeah. This was the original, one of the decision matrices that we had utilized. And one of them for the reconstruction was the reuse of the concrete structure. But I think it still stays, the concrete still stays in the positive category because all of the concrete in that structure will be ground up and reused elsewhere. It's not something that gets thrown away. So we could likely use some of it on-site and ship it out to other construction sites that are going on.
Was there one more? There's one more in ours. I don't know if we had the...
Well, since you have it in front of you, I'll explain it to you.
We've already got it.
Okay.
A really fun one.
This was, one of the requests of the executive committee was to make sure that we remain zoomed out on all of the construction that would likely be coming in the future countywide. So Tim Bradshaw put this together and has since colorized it so you can get a flavor of what's where and when. Tim unfortunately had a pre-scheduled trip to Scotland today, so he is not with us this morning. But what he did is he.
He was going to be when we were, before we moved in.
He was going to be here for the first one, so. So what he did is he looked at the cost ranges for each of the pieces of all of the space planning that we have in the works, including the future space planning, and assigned ranges to those numbers to look at what a potential cash flow need would be for the county. And then that way, you're not making a decision in isolation. You're looking at the big picture and understanding what's going on. Questions like, can we put projects together in one bond? Those are things that we can start to work through depending on how the commission wants to proceed with these proposed build-outs.
I should also mention, as we get more into the Q and A phase, that we really wanted to focus today on Fuller and see if we could develop a go-forward. I basically get the approval of the board to move forward with the Fuller Campus Plan. There's other moving pieces to all this. We've talked about what happens with this building, what happens with our services downtown. We have been exploring different options that could provide maybe, maybe some changes that could come sooner and also other facilities that are available downtown. Also, we've been talking about the medical examiner and we went from looking at a brand-new building, which is still a possibility, to embedding the service in the MSU Medical School, to looking at other facilities that are available. And so I think that I really wanted to eat the elephant one fork at a time. And so maybe we schedule a couple of weeks out another session to talk about everything that isn't on the Fuller Campus. And so that's, we're not quite ready maybe to dig into Q and A on those other pieces, but that was the plan.
Great, thanks, Al. Okay, we'll go back to questions. I guess we're open for all of it now. I would like to wrap in, I don't know, I can't math, but by five-two if we can. So we'll keep it moving, but we want commissioner question to answer. I'll say now too, I'd like to just say here to the staff, to Al, let's leave the window open for feedback from commissioners for, you know, 10 days or so before we kind of move forward. If there's thoughts you guys have outside of this, we've got a few people absent that might review it. I'll try to reach out to a few of you as well. So we're not, you know, we're not holding it up, but we're also leaving opportunity for feedback. Commissioner Halsted.
Maybe you stated this already and I just missed it, but there's the, on the corner of the building, a future 32,000 square foot addition. What is that?
So I think we're anticipating if there were ever a need for growth, how would that work? How would it work architecturally? How would it connect? Just so that we're planning for that possibility. So it's not planned to be constructed today, we're just thinking ahead.
If I could also say that this is something that I really want us to think about with every building we build. For the fastest-growing county, we hope it lasts 30, 40, 50 years. At some point, we'll have, a future board and staff will have another decision to make as far as what to do. I would love to have that decision, have an option that looks great, expanding onto the building. And so that's really why we ask that we have at least a scotch of what it would look like in the future if we did a significant expansion to it.
Sure. And so for me, since we're just talking about different things, I really love aesthetics. When I come to Grand Rapids, not necessarily the county building, but I love to walk around and look at the buildings and the different pieces of interest that are on them. With this, it's more modern and we don't really have that. It would be great to be able to incorporate it because it is our county building. So wanting to be able to keep that piece of history maybe or something that's in line with that. And then along with that, just a question to follow up. I know questions were asked about disability. asked about disabilities and about safety. Are we working with current people? Like, have we talked with our sheriff's office to ask them what they need to be able to keep the building safe, or to be able to do all of that good? And, um, disabilities advocates too. Interestingly, like, there's the code, which doesn't often serve people with disabilities as well as we think it does until you're in that spot. Um, it's just making sure that we handle some of that and make sure we go a step beyond.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question.
Especially if we've got veterans and people that are coming in from outside.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we have been working with the sheriff's office closely on the building, both what they need and then the safety, and the site in general, um, flow of the site and all of the different, um, individuals that are, that are navigating that site. Um, and then we have a partnership with Disability Advocates of Kent County, as do a number of entities, um, in the community. Um, so, we've already talked with Dave Polkowski and his team about what might that look like and as a partnership for this project.
Awesome. Good.
Um, we haven't formalized anything yet, just because we're in early days, but they're already aware of the project and the fact that we want them involved. Um, Chad mentioned we're, we're passionate and, and, um, highly invested in universal design and advancing our ability to make our community as welcoming and, um, useful for everyone that lives here. Um, but as you know, Dave's team, um, and their, their test pilots and all of their partners have a lot of great experience that we like to leverage when we have a project like this, just to make sure we're not missing anything. So, they're aware and on board.
Great. And the only other thing, it's just a nice entry, like, not to drive in. I'm directionally challenged, so if I go to a place and I don't really know where the front door is, it's difficult. So, I think being able to bring that out somehow.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, understood. Agreed.
All right, thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Morse.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, kind of following on Commissioner DeBoer's comments to the clerk and the treasurer. If you can project in the future, that ten, twenty, thirty years, do you, do you visualize that, I mean, with technology, making things maybe more efficient, but then also that the county is growing significantly? It's hard to say, like, look forward that far, but do you feel like this would be enough space for your departments or your areas?
We have space that was, particularly with elections, um, we don't see that shrinking anytime soon. Um, so, we, we do have space for growth just within our office for, um, for extra room. So, I'm not necessarily concerned about that. I don't, we're pretty lean. Actually, we're very lean as a staff, um, compared to our colleagues throughout the state. Um, so, I think, I think we have room for growth.
Like in a footprint?
In the footprint, yep.
Okay. And what's presented?
Correct.
Okay.
And we've been planning for growth
Okay.
in the footprints, um, until eventually we might need some kind of addition. But, but yeah, it isn't just, uh, you know, tight to what they need today.
And Mark, assuming that's the same with most of the departments, we're kind of planning that growth forward in all the places that we're projecting.
In the initial process for programming, before we put any lines to paper, Progressive, um, pulled all of that data and looked at the growth of each department to make sure that we have that square footage baked in.
Okay.
Uh, but then part of building a new construction, if there's any, you know, twenty, twenty-five years out, if there's unplanned growth, we have, we're better positioned within the building to make moves and changes. And then, really far out, we have Al's building on the side that can be built, uh, you know, twenty, thirty, forty years from now. Uh, but, and Al is a hundred percent correct, uh, that was the, the growth piece of the facility was something that came up with the Board of Commissioners very early in the conversation to say that if we do have to build an addition one day, we don't want the facility to look like it's cobbled together. We want it to look like it's a holistic building that was thought out from the beginning. And that's, so that's why it's shown in the renderings now.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Green. So, I just want to get your opinion and your staff and company. You know, we hear a lot that we want the building to be welcoming, and everyone's gonna be happy. I mean, does that mean when you walk up, you go to the door and the door actually works, or there's a sign that just says, "Welcome"? Uh, because that is a concern. It's, and it's not just the people that need to come there, but the people that work there. I mean, I'm looking at the pictures, and I've used this word before. It looks like your typical government building. It looks institutional, you know, and I don't know what, what, just, just expand on that. I mean, what's, what's the philosophy? Because, uh, I've seen buildings around the country that, and campuses, they call them, I guess, that...
Yeah, so, excellent, uh, thoughts and questions. I think we're, we are all, um, really interested in, you know, number one, this is a very important building for, for us and our neighbors, right? So, it's a significant, it's a significant project, something that will touch all of us. And, uh, so, we're, we're interested in the architecture being, um, being civic, a point of pride. So, that's why you'll, you'll see, um, potentially beautiful materials, details that will be coming, um, and potentially a roof overhangs that come out that protect you while you're entering, uh, plazas that you're entering onto, so you're received a little bit, uh, into a welcoming space while you're outdoors. And when you enter, I think, um, something that causes people's stress is really confusion, right? So, um, if they don't know where they're going, if it's chaotic, if it's too tight, it's too crowded, these are all the things that's our stressors for, uh, our visitors. So, um, it is early days in terms of, like, visually testing out what, you know, what is that entrance experience like. Um, we're, we're hoping that it will be, um, with durable, long-lasting materials that are beautiful, that, um, that tell you that this is a important place, but also that we're gonna see a friendly face, uh, pretty quickly, see a friendly face, uh, so that we really bring that humanity to those interactions. Um, so, there's a lot of, uh, planning that has to occur to, to get that to, to support, but, um, we're really focused on it.
I can picture when you're in, you know, I look at those stairwells, you know, don't be offended by that. At first glance, it reminds me of eighty-two Ionia. And, uh, you know, I, I think there's more different ways that will show to be welcome and people would wanna come work here. Uh...
I was gonna chime in maybe more from a philosophical side than the technical side and how we got to this elevation. We've been through many different renderings of the facilities and entrance approaches, and I, what we've found from this group is that we can't, that there was a hesitancy to go too modern. So, if we put too much of a modern flair in there, the, the worry is that the, the building loses its timeless nature. It could become dated in the future. So, there was a push to really have more of a traditional civic-type building with perhaps a modern flair, which you see a little on the roof and some of the, the, the interior, interior renderings. But, this output here was really trying to capture a timeless design that represents the civic nature of the county. And we, we joked that we want a government-nice building. We don't want this ultra-fancy building that costs too much money. We want something that represents the values of the county, and has that fiscal nature, but is nice, where it builds a sense of pride in the community, to say that is our, that this represents our county, and I'm appreciative of how this represents the county. So, that, that was the philosophical ebb and flow that we've gone through to really land on this design. Uh, can we add more transparencies and, and try to brighten up the entrance? Absolutely. But, I just wanted to share kind of the road that led to this, uh, this output here.
Okay, then for, for Chair Green. So, yeah, my, my biggest, uh, problem is, or, or, or concern, it's not a problem, is, is the growth of this county. And this site at the Fuller Campus is tight already, and to be talking about possible growth that needed for this building to have, that would be true of everything that's there, the health department, mental health, and on so. So, you know, I'm concerned about growth, and, you know, I'm even on a bigger scale concerned on whether it's a big, big enough site to handle, you know, you know, the future. And, uh, as building new or, or trying to rehab that hospital, I have to be, uh, free with Commissioner Hildebrand, that I think new's the best way. Uh, I haven't been sleeping lately, and, uh, I've watched reruns of this old house, and things never turn out well. So, I'll leave it at that.
Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, you know, as, as I reflect on sort of the purpose of this and thinking about this cohesive path forward, when we looked at the original new build proposal compared to the reconstruction of the hospital, there, there were aspects of the reconstruction that I really preferred, right? I really preferred the increased size that existed there. I really preferred the story about adaptive reuse and, you know, the savings and carbon emissions on concrete. You alluded to this, you know, previously on, on that level there. Um, but looking at the, looking at the comparison of the reconstruction to this new proposed new build, I think there's, all of those concerns from the previous new build to the reconstruction are improved, right? So, for instance, I'm looking at the column spacing here, right? We, when we toured, we saw the columns, but it's, when you put it in numbers, it's, it's stark, eighty-five columns per floor compared to eighteen columns per floor. And that's just a huge improvement in the sightlines and the visibility and the flexibility. Um, the, the gross square footage, right, is roughly the same. It's within five thousand square feet, which is made up when we think about the future addition opportunity there. Um, but the question I had was, you know, think, thinking through this, this reuse of the concrete that you alluded to, Mark, right? Um, when we think about the trade-offs there and the improved building efficiency factor and the improvement in things like green roofs and potentially thinking about gray water for landscaping use and those kinds of things, right? Is, is it turning into, you know, all those other things aside, is it turning into basically a, an equal trade-off when we think about what the impact is going to be? Or is it still sort of, you know, new construction is going to have a, a majorly negative impact on the carbon story of this building?
I think it's, we are heading towards a very good sustainability and resilient story. It's just a different story. It's one that's not leaning so heavily on, uh, that carbon capture that, of that concrete that's already there. So, for example, um, you know, our team will, will be focused on minimizing the size of the footings to minimize the amount of new concrete that potentially gets poured, um, starting from the very top, because all those loads go to the bottom. So, uh, optimizing the column spacing, even considering something like a mass timber for a, for a structural system where you're actually capturing carbon. Um, so, I, I think, um, it's not that the rehabilitation is a sustainability story and a new build is not. They both will be. They're just gonna go at it with a different, um, there's just different opportunities to pursue.
Yeah. I, I think it's really useful, and I think it's, you know, as we're telling that story, right, obviously we tell different stories to different constituency groups. I think that's a really good one to elevate here. Um, because I, I think that this is a fantastic pivot. Uh, you know, there's a dad joke stuck in there somewhere about actually rotating the building, but, um, yeah, I think it's a fantastic pivot for some of those concerns that we all expressed in this process so far, uh, to, to come up with something like this. Uh, and my, my last plug is, when we talk about, you know, accessibility, one of the things I really love about the new Disabilities Advocates headquarters is the colorized wayfinding and the pathways that exist. And I think in particular, as we think about all of the different constituency groups that come and visit, right, I mean, I, I can imagine when we have somebody going to the clerk's office and then going to a different office, right, having an actual pathway that they follow, and for the instructions to be follow the red pathway or follow the blue pathway. I think those are amazing opportunities for us to really partner with such a community leader. So, yeah, thank you all for all of your work on this.
All right, um, I'm gonna try to keep things moving as we move to, toward the end. Commissioner Burrow, and then I have Sparks and Faber.
Thank you, Chair Green. Uh, I think this has been going on for more, year, year and a half since you first met with the executive, uh, committee. And, and again, in case you don't remember, I think I was brutally honest on what those, uh, first, uh, designs looked like. I'd like to thank everyone for, for listening to all of the commissioners on the exec team as we move this forward on this process of going from those original sketches to the, uh, hospital possibility and to the new design now. I'm fully in support of it, uh, like what you've done with it. Uh, I think it'd be a great addition to, to Kent County and everything. Uh, everybody can be really proud of this. Uh, just a couple things. Uh, I know we're in the early stages, just to make sure that behind the dais, there are accesses for, uh, security reasons. Uh, I've been on other boards and commissions where there's no access, and I think that's a, that's a problem. Um, and maybe a bathroom back there wouldn't be a bad idea, too. So, thank you.
That, that's in the programs.
Nice job. Thank you.
Mr. Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to personally say, wow. I mean, I feel heard. Uh, the last designs were not that aesthetically pleasing, and I feel that this is. Um, when we're looking at the building design, I would like to know what the employees think. We're not here every day. You know, we come in during our meetings, but the people that work there in the county building every day need to feel that the space works for them, so that they can give the best service as possible. So, I love the design. I, I really do love it. Um, it looks, it, uh, it looks, um, you know, uh, open. I think that with different decor is going to make, you know, the changes that we may all want, uh, in need, but it looks professional. Um, I would be very proud to, you know, sit in that boardroom. Uh, so, I think you did a very good job. Thank you for listening to us. It was great. Good work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Faber.
Uh, yeah, could you go to maybe page ten, which is kind of the site overview? Uh, so, I share some of Commissioner Steck's concerns of kind of staring at the backside of another building. Um, can you explain the, what the thought process was of not moving this building farther to the southwest, uh, maybe in line with Network One-eighty as a front door? Is there site-grade issues? Is it just, we want the parking out front?
Uh, well, there are a couple of things, um, to consider when, I think our team is seeing the opportunity for the campus to create, um, wayfinding from entry. So, um, you have the Network One-eighty building, the administration building, and the health department building, and then potentially a, a future building on the bottom, all kind of, uh, oriented around that entry space. So, that, that is really one of our, our thoughts there. The other is, we like the idea of building on the demolition site more than, uh, moving forward. I don't know why. I think that's to make potential more sustainable.
I would ask why.
Um, yeah. And then, um, really the, now, there is an opportunity to clean up that light at Fuller. Um, as much as I like to draw the streets, engaging with roads wherever I want, the traffic engineers and civil engineers always push me to put those right across from other streets. So, um, we think pushing it back a little bit, one, it kind of lines up when you turn onto the Kent Drive. I think you'll be facing right towards the administration building. Um, and I think we could do that moved forward. It just would be, um, uh, yeah, it just would be a different campus-type experience if we brought the county building to be more primary.
Again, I'll go back to the philosophical path that we've been on. There, there's not one hard answer that says the building should go there, but there's many different philosophical variables that come up in the conversations for placement. One is the, the reuse of the construction site. The elevation on the site significantly drops as you travel to the south. So, as, the further south you go, the lower the building becomes, and we start to lose that presence and visibility of the facility. Um, and there's a lot of native trees on the, on the south end of the site. So, we, you know, a year, year and a half ago, when we began this process, we thought we'd be in that southern outlot, uh, where the, uh, Michigan State Police lab used to sit. Uh, but we have since, you know, zoomed way out and reevaluated the visibility of site, the elevation, how it fits, um, people's comfort level with the building being in that location, because we've had a building of that size and stature, uh, for many, many years. Uh, but this location has value in our mind of that it maintains that presence. It allows us to realign the roadway. It has room for growth, and room for growth without affecting other potential growth on the site. So, we, we maintain those southern outlots. We also maintain another outlot, um, farther to the east on the site that's just off of that, off of that facility. So, if we do have... So if we do have new programs, growing programs, we do have these sites that can remain here.
Yeah, thanks for the explanation. I guess I'd still like to maybe push back a little bit on whether that building can be pushed a little farther to the southwest to just give it a little more, to get that front entrance away from the corner of Network 180. I'm not saying push it all the way to the street, but like what does it look like if it's over another 50 feet, 100 feet? And then, you know, partly because I again agree with Commissioner Stack that, you know, I don't think we want people feeling like they're coming through the side door instead of the front door. And I know that's kind of how it's oriented right now, but just thinking that through a little bit and then had the opportunity to tour through Special Olympics last night actually, and just a lot of great learning there. But one of their, you know, budgetary constraints was they kept the front door where it was and it's a school with, you know, former school with lots of entrances. And so one of the ways that the architects still maneuvered around maybe not having as much of a prominent front door was creating some art or like an iconic sculpture or something that signifies to folks that this is the place that they're supposed to be. You know, we've had good, bad or other, we've had the Calder as our beacon of this is where you go. And I'm not saying we need to do that again, but something, you know, thinking forward about what sort of exists out in one of these plazas or in, towards the street that signifies, you know, this is the county. Thank you.
I'm going to call on Commissioner Hennessy and that's, I'm going to cut it off there. Commissioner Ross, I know you had your hand up. We, everybody here I know is willing to answer some questions when we adjourn, so we'll continue that and there's, still have an opportunity to be heard. But I want to make sure, I know I got people that need to leave and I want to make sure all of us can be here for the conversation. So no offense to you, you were just last in line. So Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you. I've appreciated, I mean, the old construction adages, you know, measure twice, cut once. And we've been going through this process and we continue to hear different ideas today. My work was actually working with hospitals and their construction projects. And the one thing that, the one aspect of this that I hope we don't short in any way is the interior fixings, the color coordination, the flow that was mentioned. But, but that is really a very important element and it might cost more than you think it's going to be or that you want to budget for. But I think it's really important to how, to the, you know, even talking the art, it's very important to the, to the total appearance and feel of the building. And so I hope that we continue to focus on the interior once we get exterior details settled. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have?
That's okay. I mean, so my career as an architect, I will totally agree, the interior design is primarily the most important thing. And then the landscape architecture is probably two and the buildings are really the background for all of that. But we are, our team's focused on bringing exactly what you're talking about, some color, life, humanity to, to the design as we move forward.
Great. I wanted to say thanks to everybody. I think from what we've heard this morning, we're going to continue to move forward, but not at warp speed deliberately the way we have been. Commissioners, as I said, there's still opportunity to get feedback to everyone as we go along. I know, Mark, you expressed interest in that. If you have anything to say before we wrap.
Yeah, just what we're really looking for today is consensus on where we're headed. And what I didn't want to do is begin any type of public engagement with these renderings or designs or philosophies that we've talked about today if there are, is any hesitancy on the board. So we want to make sure we iron out any issues that remain before we start showing graphics to the public, because once we show pictures, it's harder, it gets harder and harder to change them without further engagement. So we want to make sure that we're comfortable here, embedding some of the commentary that we've, we've heard today and then proceeding with public engagement and working with the city of Grand Rapids on the different nuances of zoning.
Yeah, so what I'm taking from this is that there's a general consensus to move ahead, that will keep kind of a comment period open for 10 days. And then once we have those comments, I'm going to circle back with the chair and look at it. And if we decide that there isn't, aren't any deal killers there that are things that maybe we can work out as we go, then we're going to keep moving. That's kind of what I'm, what I'm taking out of this.
Great. So please keep the line of communication open, commissioners, especially in the next few days. All right, with that, we'll move to public comment. Are there any members of the public here who wish to comment this morning? I see none. And with that, we will move to adjourn. Thanks to all the team working on this. Thanks for the commissioners sticking around for your engagement today. We are adjourned.